I would like to welcome everyone to our regular Board of Education meeting. And at this time, this evening, we have with us our middle school first tech team 12327, and their coach, and they're going to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Hi, everybody.
It is a good group.
It is.
One of them have been with us before doing the pledge, so they're looking into this. So I'm going to introduce everyone we have here. We have Mikey Condon, Mikey Daleo, Connor Cooper-Honnold, Bryce Kimmel, Josie McIntyre, Joseph Pacito, Zach Pickering, Evan Planka, Riley Savins, Jacob Schoenborn, Casey Sties. And we also have with us tonight Shelley Daleo, who is our coach and leader of these students. So at this time, if everyone could please rise for the pledge. Do you guys want to turn around? We're ready when you're ready.
My eulogians to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Great job, guys. Okay, moving on to our mission statement. Tracy?
At Richmond Community Schools, we provide a quality education that empowers students to be successful in a global community. Chris?
Here.
Sue?
Here.
Jessica?
Here.
Sarah?
Here.
Margaret?
Here.
And Kyle will be here in 10 minutes or so.
Mm-hmm.
And I am here, so we have a board.
Thank you. Next, looking for a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
I make the motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next is the consent agenda. Motion would be in order?
Motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second. It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Brian?
I'd just like to recognize two of our coaches, for a variety of reasons, had to resign from their position. Mrs. Schroeder, the girls' R.C. basketball coach, I want to thank her for her dedication to the girls and helping that program, as well as Jamie Pax, the eighth grade volleyball coach.
Okay, any other comments or questions? Hearing none. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next is the portion of our meeting for public comment. It is the time, if there's anyone who would like to address the board, they may do so. They can come up to the podium. There should be a card there that you can leave your name or telephone number. If you have a question that needs to be answered, someone will get back to you. While this is not a question-answer period at this point, but you are able to come up and address the board, and you have three minutes to speak. Is there anyone who would like to address the board? No? Okay. Moving on to our Board of Ed student report.
I hope everybody had a great Thanksgiving. I know I definitely did. It was nice to have a little break. As always, I'll start off with Lee School. November 19th and 20th, the PTO had a pizza party for students who sold one or more boxes of chocolate bars, and students who sold three or more received prizes and gift cards to C.J. Barrymore's. November 27th and the 30th, the MISD literacy team will be modeling lessons in the classrooms. November 30th, the PBIS assemblies will be held, and these all have the theme of gratitude. The preschool and kindergarten assemblies will be at 8:30, first and second at 9:00, and third and fourth at 9:30. On December 5th, a school-wide Detroit Red Wings assembly will be held. And this program is an interactive assembly designed to provide a positive message for the students about the importance of education and a healthy lifestyle. December 10th through the 14th is the PTO-sponsored Santa shop, and the Green Club continues to collect plastic caps for their recycled bench project. Moving to the middle school, the middle school basketball season has started this week, and the eighth grade attended the annual Holocaust museum trip. And my brother was a part of this trip, and he said it was super cool because they got to meet a Holocaust survivor, and she told her story, and definitely a few tears were shed. People said it was really emotional. Eighth grade will be attending the annual STEAM event at Macomb Community College on the 5th, and the Student Council food drive is underway for the holiday season. Lastly, for the high school, everyone at RHS is back from a restful Thanksgiving, and we're ready to finish this first semester strong. On Monday, November 19th, our world finalist high school robotics team attended the very first robotics Macomb County open house at the MISD. Members of our team were able to talk with local businesses in Macomb County and executive Mark Hackel. Our robotics team continues to put RHS on the map in first robotics. The high school administrative team is currently taking staff nominations for a newly formed student advisory committee, and this will meet with the RHS administrative team before school once a month in an attempt to ensure that all students' voices, concerns, and ideas are being heard. Winter athletics have begun, and student athletes are showing dedication and effort both inside and outside the classrooms. And lastly, the high school play Blitz Spirit completed a successful run of performances in the RHS auditorium between November 16th and November 18th. That is all I have.
Any questions?
Wasn't the middle school or the elementary school that's doing the buddy bench?
That's the elementary school, huh?
That was the Green Club you said, right?
Yes.
Are you going to try to sign up for that student advisory?
I don't know if you can sign up or if you're nominated, but if I'm nominated, I'll definitely...
How does that work, Mr. Castle?
We are taking staff nominations for students who would otherwise not have their voices or opinions heard, and then we'll be filling any additional spots with students who have our ear, which Lexi does.
Yeah. Good. Very good. Now, the eighth grade STEAM trip, do you... What is that exactly? What does that mean?
It's where they go to the center campus, and they learn about different engineering and manufacturing, how mathematics and manufacturing is involved in the automotive. It started last year, and most last impression we had last year, students go, and it's the idea, as Mr. Bartel said, that there's a demand in the manufacturing industry and those trades, and how STEAM and manufacturing works together. There's a post on our Facebook page about for parents, because in the evening, I can't remember which night it is, there's an event for parents and students to attend. It's all free, and they do a lot of giveaways, but it's to open students' eyes to other opportunities that they might not have thought of. It's mostly if they're in engineering or mathematics.
So is everyone going? The whole eighth grade?
Yep.
The whole eighth grade? Oh, excellent. Okay. Thank you.
Last year, we targeted eighth grade, too, to make sure that we rotate that kind of our target here, or our target grade over here.
Yeah, because that's nice to do with career...
The career cruises?
That we do just before the holidays, just after.
Okay. Excellent. Thanks. Thank you, Lexi. Next, superintendent legislative.
Okay. Again, I also hope everybody had a wonderful Thanksgiving. You all deserve a break for the students and staff. I wonder how many students were actually looking at the weather, hoping for a snow day today, because I know I got a lot of texts from my daughter's friends.
True.
She was relating that, too, so... Just a couple points to add on to what Lexi said. Upcoming, we have some Christmas choir concerts. On the December 5th, we have the middle school and high school holiday concert band, a band concert at 7 o'clock. On December 13th, we have the choir concert at 7 o'clock, the middle school and high school. And then on Monday, December 17th, we have the elementary holiday concert, which will also be at the high school auditorium. All three of them are at 7... Actually, the elementary is 6 o'clock and 7:15. 6 o'clock is third grade, and 7:15 is fourth grade. We moved it from the elementary to the auditorium. I know all three teachers, Mr. Finley, Mrs. Shaq, and Mrs. Cora, formerly Mrs. Dunin, are working very hard on putting together what is always a great concert. Update the board from where we were at the last meeting. At the last meeting, I received direction from the board about moving fourth grade to the middle school, so I want to update you where we are in that process. Following the board meeting, the entire district received an email from me regarding what the direction the board was, to try to keep them informed, as well as building administrators met with third, fourth, and fifth grade teachers to talk about what concerns or questions they might have. Later that week, I asked third, fourth, and fifth grade teachers to gather input from their students, and I've received today all of the students' input on what they would like for playground equipment. So we will include that student input in the RFP that goes out later this month, so we can see projected playground equipment. There was a holiday or a letter that was sent home on the 20th of Thanksgiving. The entire district on the back talked about the letter. And then there was a letter, which I put in front of you today, that went home to K-3 families, looking at those that would be affected by this move. We had posted it originally on Facebook, emails that were in the system, and as well as on the district website. To date, 1,845 people saw the post on Facebook, and of the 1,334 emails that were sent out, all but 160 were marked as received by the report. So trying to get the information out. Today, I met with the middle school and elementary staffs, talked to them about the process and get some of their questions that they have. I will host the parent informational meeting next Monday, December 3rd, at 7 o'clock at Lee Elementary School in the media center. That will be why I just be one of many meetings to come as we begin outlining a timeline of this transition, of this process. So that's what we've done to date since the last board meeting. Legislators are back in session for a limited number of days. I can pass out this letter to the board. I'd like you, in your free time, read it. It is by... Recently, Representative Tim Kelly, the Republican from Saginaw, sent this letter to his colleagues, urging them to act on three specific topics, all related to education in lame duck. And as we have learned from the past, oftentimes, things that are rushed through in lame duck is not good for education. In his letter, he urges colleagues to pass legislation to create a new accountability system, which I'll speak of in a minute, create innovative school districts, and increase the requirements for teacher preparation, and certain institutions to be certified. In our opinion, in my opinion, and superintendents across this county, tackling tough education issues in the last three weeks remaining before lame duck session ends is not a good practice. These are topics that need much thought and looked at the long-term effect. Nearly EAA legislation, the educational achievement, which created the statewide school system, was proposed in lame duck and passed in lame duck. Right-to-work legislation, very little to no debate or conversation or hearing on it was passed. Proposal A1, which was the massive tax funding to fund the roads in the final days of 2014, was a complete failure. The gag order that they passed that allowed schools to, if you were going for a Miller election, you couldn't say anything about it. You couldn't respond, you couldn't do anything, which tied district's hands even further than factual information. Some of the things that are out there, I talked about the school accountability system. There is a move to put letter grades for school systems. It's important that when they did the... I forget the actual term, but when they relieved the debt from Detroit Public Schools, part of that structure was that there would be a letter grade system for Detroit Public Schools. And now they want to take that concept and apply it to every school in the state of Michigan, which they're not looking at objective criteria. It's defined by a small group of individuals, a Lansing-run system, where they can dictate what is on there and what's not. Similar states have implemented this type of system, and they may repeal them or put a freeze on them so they can figure out there's a better system. You know, if you ask Home Builders Association, Realtors Association, they are all opposed to letter grade system because it affects the... You don't really understand what that grade means. It affects the market of your homes in the areas. There's some other sales tax and other tax changes that are being proposed in lame duck, but they affect education. Some of them are completely changing the way the sales tax is structured. Governor Snyder and Speaker-elect Lee Cantfield have both put forward ideas to make major changes to the sales tax distribution. Both ideas divert sales tax from schools to roads. Pitting roads for schools is not a way to move this state forward. We have a structural problem. In 2014, Representative Chatfield proposed a similar shift, which would take the gas tax that we collect at the pump and make it solely for the roads. If that was put in place, it would be a loss of $725 million to the school aid or for us, every school. It'd be a $475 cut per pupil. We experienced that cut in 2011 when they took $470 mid-year. That would be devastating. Governor Snyder's plan to fix roads is he wants to take the online sales tax revenue and use it all for the roads. Well, if you recall, the sales tax, 2% of the sales tax goes to a state aid, and as the brick-and-mortar buildings are becoming fewer and fewer, like Sears, Kmart, Toys R Us, people are shopping online, and that's a loss of revenue. If that revenue is not consistent with the sales tax, our school aid fund will decrease even more. There's also a proposal to change the income tax to repeal the share of the state's earned income tax that is currently earmarked for education, which would basically cost education more than $400 million a year in the education budget. So I would encourage everybody in the audience, the listening audience, parents, students, board members, community members, please contact your legislators and say passing this stuff in lame duck is not good. It's not good policymaking and so forth. I will be attending the legislative forum up in Lansing on Wednesday. I'll be there all day, meeting with all of our representatives, talking to them about lame duck legislation. So if there's any other information on any of these bills or any information the board would like, or anybody in this side, I'd be more than happy to provide it, but it's going to be a whirlwind for the next couple of weeks until they go into session and the new legislative process starts.
I'll just hold our breath, wonder. That's what we do. All right? Hold our breath and wonder what negative things will happen as a result.
When you say you're meeting scheduled meetings or you're just going up there, you know, is it a set thing, I guess?
It's a set. The superintendents from the tri-county area, Wayne, Oakland, Macomb County, some board members, some administrators are all going... Most of them are all going up. All of them are going up. There's a few districts that aren't representative, and we have scheduled time with each of our legislators. We've reached out to our legislators to see if we can have a smaller meeting with the areas of our legislative... For instance, Representative Yaras, we are made of shares, New Haven shares, we're all going to see if the superintendents can meet with Representative Yaras, Yaras separate than others, so...
And what did you hear from him?
We haven't received a response yet. But no, we will reach out, but I'm not... This is not... When you rush policies that have long-lasting impact on the school system and the state, it's not good. It needs to be well thought out, and it needs to be the best it is for our students.
I think, you know, I mean, I think the thing, too, about the letter grade system, the state has a ways, we all have learned, you can't... I mean, when it comes to assessments, right? State assessments, and then how that affects us here. And they change them consistently, so that... So we're constantly comparing from year to year to year, apples and oranges, but yet it makes a huge impact on us and on teachers. And so if... I don't think a school district is against having some sort of a standard to live up to, but the standard has to remain the same. It can't change every year because it just doesn't work. It's not good. It's not good for anybody. And so if they're interested in coming up with a grading system, it's got to stay that way.
Right.
It's got to stay that way and be consistent for a long time. That's the thing. They've changed it so many times that it just is not fair.
I've been superintendent for five years now, and I've had three systems. We had a letter grade system.
Colors.
Then we went to colors, and now we went to a dashboard.
Yep.
So trying to do school improvement and keep your eye on the prize when the system is constantly changing because of political wins, it's not good for our kids. On our website, on the legislative tab on the left, is a link to every legislator that represents Richmond Community School. Feel free to call them, email them. Ask them not to rush things in lame duck session. That's all.
Next, items of interest from members of the board. Does anyone have anything? I just... Girls' Scout troop 75076, Julie Jagoda, is the leader, and I just wanted to give them a shout-out. They, a couple of girls, came to my house and interviewed me as a female leader, asking me questions about the school district, you know, things that I would like to see different, and it was just... It was a really cool interview, but these are the same girls that came last year and spoke to us about the... When we had all the sickness going on and the washing and stuff, and they came and then they met with Mr. Wamsley. And when I was in Mr. Wamsley's office last week, all the hand sanitizers from that meeting are now everywhere. Brian was washing his hands, and I just said to those girls, "Keep it going, because, you know, you obviously, you came and you spoke to us, and you got something to happen." So I just want to give... And Sarah's daughters and the troop as well, but just, I think Julie does a really good job, and just kudos to her and to those girls, because I think it's pretty cool. So, yeah. Yeah. They were cute.
Brian, I have a question, and maybe you could get an update for us. The city leadership came to us, the city of Richmond leadership came to us, I forget how many months ago, asking for an easement from us for the purposes of the updating of a pump, right? I thought at that meeting, we were given a timeframe for that work to be done and completed, and the last time I kind of drove through that area, it doesn't look as though anything has happened. And I'm right, that it hasn't been finished, the work hasn't been done?
They have not dug the hole yet for the line on our property line. I can't speak if anything's happened in the back, but you're right, the pump is still operational, and the piping and everything is still on.
I just remember it sounding as though it was urgent work that needed to be done, and that's one of the reasons that I voted yes, was because it was this urgent, or it really needed to be done. So I guess I just would be interested in knowing a timeframe again, to know if it's going to be done. I only have one more meeting, sitting here on this side of the table, so maybe if you don't get the information between now and the next meeting, I get it, but maybe even just in a weekly update, just so that we have some understanding.
Didn't we get... Wasn't there a... I can't remember. Were we given a tiny... Sorry, but I don't know that it was just that line.
The last I had talked with the city manager, which was probably... It was probably right around about this topic, right around when the school started, was there was an issue with permits in the area in the back, and that they had to go to the drain commission, and there was a hole, but I will be more detailed, and I just figure we'll get more of a timeframe. I, too, thought it would have been farther along than it is.
Well, I just remember the conversation, that it wasn't... It wasn't going to affect like that driveway at all during the school year, and so just to be kind of checking up on that and seeing what the timeframe is.
Kyle just said he thought fall, something they said would be done might fall, something like that. So maybe if we could get...
Yeah.
If we could get something, and if they could come to our next meeting, maybe and kind of give us an update on where they're at with it, that would be great.
Will do. I will.
Anybody else? Okay. And move on to our action items. The first one, approval of the high school gymnasium scoreboard. This was an item that we discussed at our meeting last week, or two weeks ago, I should say. There is a sample resolution.
A motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent. It authorizes the superintendent to enter into a contract with side effects incorporated for two new scoreboards for the high school gymnasium as outlined in the attached documentation. Furthermore, the board delegates the screening and approval of all such advertisements on the scoreboard to the superintendent or his designated...
Second. It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion? I know there was a question about the advertising, right? So is...
Just the dollar amount is included.
In the backup, on number three, talks about the premium sponsorship and gold sponsorship for roughly three years, and they do a range as we start analyzing. It'd be $4,000 to $5,000 for gold sponsorship, and $2,000 to $3,000 for... It should be for platinum sponsorship, and $2,000 to $3,000 for gold sponsorship.
And you had answered the other question about the warranty and the weekly...
Yes.
Right.
It's also on number two. We do have the five-year warranty, typically what's standard, and we do get that warranty with this.
Anything else? Okay, it's been moved and supported. I'm going to do a roll call vote. Chris?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
Jessica?
Aye.
Sue?
Aye.
Sarah?
Aye.
Kyle?
Aye.
An aye vote, aye. Motion carries. Next, approval of snow plowing, removal and salting, lawn mowing, and athletic field painting services. Again, we had a presentation from Brian last week, went out for bid. I believe there were two bids.
There were two bids, Stafford Landscaping and Daley's.
And there is a recommendation from the superintendent and a sample resolution.
A motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and award a contract to Daley's Landscaping for snow plowing, removal, and salting, lawn mowing, and athletic field painting services for two years in an amount specified in the attached bid documents for which funding from the 2018-19 general fund budget is authorized and for which funding in the 2019-20 general fund budget will reflect said contract. The Board of Education authorizes the superintendent to extend said contract for up to two additional years if the contractor meets and exceeds... Meets or exceeds district expectations as determined by the superintendent.
Support. It's been moved and supported. Any discussion?
The other, I just would like to make sure the board is aware of, and I did point it out, if you look in the attachment, it gives you the map of the salting and the lawn mowing area. It is a little different than two years ago, actually, yeah, two years ago, when we moved just from Daley's to Stafford, because it did not include the odd. And when we bid this, it now includes the odd, because at that time, and there wasn't basically... There was very little price increase from what we were paying two years ago.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, it's been moved and supported. I'm going to do a roll call vote. Kyle?
Aye.
Sarah?
Aye.
Sue?
Aye.
Jessica?
Aye.
Chris?
Aye.
Tracy?
Aye.
An aye vote, aye. Motion carries. Next, approval of board bylaws and policies. Again, we went over all of these two weeks ago. There's a sample resolution.
Motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve the attached board policies as presented on November 12, 2018, for a first reading, and November 26, 2018, for a second reading.
Support.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion?
I did only receive one question, which is in your backup regarding dual enrollment. Just as a clarifying, there's a formula the state requires us to use for dual enrollment, and anything over that dollar amount is a responsibility of a parent. dual enrollment, and anything over that dollar amount is a responsibility of a parent slash student. Typically, it, we never hit to be over that dollar amount, but there is potential that would be, and that's why that board policy reflects the current law.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, it has been moved and supported. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries. Next, approval of overnight baseball trip to Florida. Again, Coach Evans was here two weeks ago, did a presentation. I just want, in our, in the board action that states that the trip is April 8 through the 12th, but I believe it's April 1 through the 5th, 2019.
Okay.
Sorry. So there is a sample resolution.
A motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve the baseball program's overnight trip to Florida during its pre-break as outlined in the attached documentation.
Support. It's been moved and supported. Any discussion?
I'm just going to abstain from voting in this one.
Just a quick question, right? I know you, because it's who you are, you checked with sets in, you checked liability perspective, that if anything tragic happens on a journey to or from this, anything like that, because it is kind of school-related, but how does, it's, we're not.
As long as the paperwork that's sent out and the board's actions, during the time they are there, that's the related school experiences. Outside of that time is the family's choice.
And so, like, when I traveled with kids before, the student handbook travels with us? Do you know what I mean? I mean, all those rules go with us, right? So those rules, athletic handbook, all that kind of stuff, that's only going to be in play for the hours that they're together as a team. Is that how that works?
A little of both, because, yeah, it's definitely during that time, but there are pieces of that athletic handbook that if something happens outside of that time.
They're still held.
They're still held to the consequences within that handbook.
And the handbook is 365, it's 365.
Yes.
Right. Right. So I just, so I just wanted to be clear about it.
But the liability is defined during the time that they are in the structure under Coach Evans' supervision and the other coaches.
Right.
During that defined time.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else? Okay, it has been moved and supported. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, abstaining.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next, approval of electric restaurant range for the culinary arts classroom.
In the bid, when the board awarded, I had made a comment, I think it was at the end of August when we awarded, but I can't remember the date. There are some items that the district needs to purchase, this is one of those items. Our intent is to use the CT funds that we receive, which go into the general fund, and then we allocate them out through a line item in the account, so. In the drawings that were done for the scope of the room, the electric stove was the one that was recommended by CII Food Design Services, who designs culinary arts classrooms for school districts across the state, and across the nation. And so this is the one that they recommend based on the scope of our work. As you see, we bid it out, or we sent, asked for quotes from three, four companies, the one that's recommended, it's all the same stove, it's just one with the lowest, so we're arguing the lowest.
There's sample resolution.
A motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve the purchase of an electric restaurant range for the culinary arts classroom from HPS for an amount not to exceed $13,305.60, plus shipping and handling as outlined in the attached documentation for which funding from the 2018-19 general fund is authorized.
Second. It's been moved and supported. Any discussion?
It's quite a stove for $13,000. Wow. Yes, it's awesome. It's exciting, it's just exciting to think that that room and.
Oh, with that classroom.
Yeah, that classroom.
Start painting and putting the floor in, I believe next week is when they're just going to start painting that classroom, put it in the floor, all the infrastructure's in, the wall's up.
Wow, awesome, very cool.
Okay, I'm going to do a roll call vote. Kyle.
Aye.
Tracy.
Aye.
Chris.
Aye.
Jessica.
Aye.
Sue.
Aye.
Sarah.
Aye.
An aye vote, aye, motion carries. Next, approval of Roosevelt Civic Auditorium building use agreement with Dominion Church.
The attached agreement is what, after working with representatives from Dominion Church and clarifying questions and so forth, was what our school attorney done and all put together to represent both interests. And do, as a, interest, so basically, it's, in essence, a year contract, and we extend it obviously to the second year, and then beyond that would come, so in essence, as long as everything goes well, it's a two-year contract. All the descriptions on utilities, et cetera, are all listed in here in the process, so we'll plan it upon approval tonight. We will meet with them on Friday and sign the agreement and turn over keys.
There's a sample resolution.
A motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent and approve the Roosevelt Civic Auditorium building use agreement with Dominion Church as outlined in the attached documentation.
Support. It's been moved and supported. Any discussion?
We do have representatives here for the board, as you know, they're game, as you know, they're very excited. I look forward to working with them.
And I just want to publicly express thanks to them for following the process with us and going through it each step with us. It's, it was a big item for us to have to consider based on what had happened to us previously, so we appreciate your patience and working with us as well as you did.
Thank you.
And it just feels really good to be able to know that that building's going to be used.
Yep.
And utilized in a great way, so thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, it's been moved and supported. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries. Next, looking for a motion to go into closed session. It's a sample resolution.
Pursuing the section 15.2688A of the Michigan Opened Meetings Act, a motion that the Board of Education go into closed session to consider the periodic personality evaluation of the superintendent.
Support. It's been moved and supported. Any discussion? Here now, I'll do a roll call. Sarah.
Aye.
Kyle.
Aye.
Sue.
Aye.
Jessica.
Aye.
Chris.
Aye.
Tracy.
Aye.
An aye vote, aye, motion carries. We are going to go into closed session to conduct the evaluation. We will come out to adjourn at the end, and we won't be voting on anything.